Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council Goal Setting Workshop. Please silence all cell—oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I thought Kate was with us. Okay. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the workshop. I now call this meeting to order. I'm going to defer to Mary Haddad for our pledge of allegiance. I'm going to call on our clerk for the roll call.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Councilmember Anstett?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and second to approve the agenda state your names?
City Councilman Chris Anstett moves to approve the agenda.
Mayor Protem Wolf, I will second.
I'll defer to the city clerk for the call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Now we move on to public comments. This section is reserved for public comments related to the goal-setting workshop. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. Prior to the meeting, we did receive several written public comments, and they were distributed to council. They were from Natalie Roser, Oldagora; Nicole—oh, my goodness—Rodomas, Oldagora; Howard Stutz, Oldagora; Christine and Mark Richardson and their two sons, Oldagora; George Coleman, Oldagora; Stacy and David Dorenfeld, Oldagora; Jared and Dana Walker, Oldagora; Jess Thomas, Oldagora; Serena Nuzy, Oldagora; Jay Creacher, Oldagora—or, excuse me, Agora Hills—and Ben Suber, Agora Hills. And we do have some speakers this evening, and for the council's reference, the public comments that were received are attached to your iPads. Our first speaker is Carolyn Tressino.
You have three minutes to speak, and your time will end when the red light appears on the podium. Please adjust the microphone, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sylvester and city council. We request that you consider including trail features and layout as important components in the road improvements around Oldagora. The decision regarding trail features and grant funding is within your authority, and we believe it is necessary for those to be included in this budget cycle for community safety. The Trails and Pathways Master Plan, which was approved unanimously on December 10, 2008, describes how trails and pathways positively impact individuals and improve community by providing recreation, transportation opportunities, health benefits, and overall quality of life improvements. One of the key guiding principles of the Trails and Pathways Master Plan emphasizes the importance of prioritizing the completion of the Medea Creek pedestrian bicycle system and the Oldagora Equestrian Trail System when seeking grants and funding. The general plan goals under CS1 Parks and Recreation Facilities includes policy CS1.3, which highlights bicycle and pedestrian connections. It states, "Connect recreational facilities with walking paths, trails, bikeways, and equestrian trails." This initiative fosters community and safety, underscoring the importance of trails and pathways. Goal CS5 focuses on the trail and path network, aiming to create a comprehensive system that makes pedestrian and equestrian travel healthy, feasible, safe, and enjoyable modes of transportation and forms of recreation in Agora Hills. Policy CS5.6 titled "Trail System" advocates for the implementation of Citywide Trails and Pathways Master Plan and the completion of the city's trail system. CS5.7 notes, "Securing funding for trails development through grants and alternative funding sources." During our last discussion, we were informed that these initiatives take time, and we have been really patient. However, it's now imperative to resume progress with the planned road improvements noted in the city's annual pavement rehabilitation program. It is vital to ensure that residents and visitors can use safe pathways instead of the streets. We seek your support to enhance safety for Oldagora residents and the many visitors who utilize our trail system for health and well-being. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Serena Nuzy, followed by George Coleman.
Hi there. I submitted some slides. There's about 10 slides, so if you want to follow along, I can walk you through those. I am here to request some road and pathway repairs in Oldagora. In recent years, we have seen degradation on the busiest section of Chesbro that has created unsafe pedestrian and equestrian use. Now, I don't mind—if you look at Slide 2—I don't mind a rustic road. I think it adds to the rural character of our neighborhood. A typical cross-section includes the horse trail, an inverted swale, a cross-section of the street, another swale, and then parking area on the opposite side to the horse trail. Slide 3. In recent years, it's become more neglected state, and it's lost some of its charm. Repair is not needed everywhere, but there are some very damaged areas that continue to deteriorate. Slide 4 will show you the condition of the trail system, where we expect horses and people to travel. Year-to-year, the pavement continues to crumble, and the erosion widens. On Slide 5, you know, the last 25 years, I've been evacuated several times due to wildfires. And when evacuating, Chesbro is congested with horse trailers, residents, and first responders. You're sometimes working in the dark, animals and people are anxious, and hand-walking a horse down the street poses dangers. The general plan stipulates identifying standards for evacuation and maintain adequate departure paths. During the recent fires in January, the city issued important safety tips for residents, which stated to help emergency services and keep roads clear for first responders by parking off the street. Off-street parking on Chesbro is—due to pavement damage—is problematic in many places. Slide 6. Chesbro Road follows a historic waterway—that is Palo Comato Creek. During a heavy rain, the Chesbro Road itself can experience 2 to 3 inches of water across the entire street. Slide 7. This is a much tamer picture of the water flow, but you can see where the water wants to travel. Sections in the general plan stipulate identifying and improving deficiencies to address flooding. On Slide 8. If not for poor conditions of the pavement, the horse trails and parking areas on either side would never have washed out this much. Even in El Nino years in the late '90s, we did not see this kind of pathway damage. I'm almost done. Slide 9. When Chesbro was last paved—I think in 2015—the swale portion was not included and eroded faster than the main portion of the road. This also had the effect of leveling the road by elevating it. On Slide 10—as final—I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here. I just simply want to rebuild what was and what has already been designed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is George Coleman, followed by Karen Kent.
Good afternoon, Budget Workshop people. I'm here—to spend our money. We have a lot of money in reserve. We've got to use it. So first, my most passionate thing is the Sober Living Residences, which you all know has been a campaign for over 10 years, initiated with Kathy and myself, Henry Stern involved, Jeremy was involved at a meeting in our house with all this group. I'm not going to recite everything I've sent you, because it's all in writing. You ended up with about six or seven letters from people in the community, and a letter from Jess Thomas, the president of the Oldagora Home, which represents about 170 people. This is a big deal, and we've now gotten—because of my monitoring with Candace for years—we now have the authority to create the regulations, and you shouldn't worry about litigation, that Bill Cola and Linda North was worried about. That's passed. What you also have is like when we did the short-term rental agreement, and our mayor suggested many examples of communities we could use for the basis. One was Palm Springs. So now we have examples or guidelines established by the city of Costa Mesa, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel if we're going to create guidelines for the Sober Living Residences. And we have to head in that direction, and I'm hoping that you guys will work on the budget. Whether you complete it this year or next year, we've got to get it done. My only other comment is, related to what Carolyn and Serena were talking about, which is the trails and pathways and the whole project that the community has been working on as the safe passage. We passed this resolution 17 years ago. It was—what—I was going—it was 1509, in '08. We planned on this. We—I don't know if we put aside money or not, but we did a study. We had a couple of errors in the ways that it came about, but after 17 years, I think it's time. And by the way, my last comment is, Chesbro Road is a wreck. The rut—the ruts and all that is incredible. I'm just—we'll cite one experience during the Kenneth fight. Jess and his wife Toni were trying to get out of their house and evacuate. There was a horse loose on Chesbro, right near where we was. Nobody could get by because the horse was running around, and a car tried to get by on the right of Chesbro and went into the rut—which is there—and what was 2 feet became about 15 feet—for a horse and two vehicles to get by. Eventually, got out of that, but you know, in an evacuation, we can't have these incidents.
Thank you very—
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Kent.
Thank you for listening to me. I'm told that it is never a good idea to begin any of these things with a quote or a definition, so I'm going to. If I can find it, of course. I'm here to talk about the Wildlife Crossing, which I know you're going to be talking about, and I'm also here to advocate on behalf of the Cultural Arts Council. Thank you for having me. The definition of culture, of which there is a thickness in every dictionary, but one of them is, "The arts and other manifestations of human intellectual achievement regarded collectively. The customs, arts, social institutions, and achievements of a particular nation, people, or other social group." And I think the Annenberg Wildlife Crossing is every bit of the culture of Agora. And—excuse me one more time—for—I never do things off my phone. I'm a paper person, but you guys are green, so. Since I understand that you're going to be considering city participation at an arts level to the Annenberg Wildlife Crossing, I'm here to present a simple one bravo to you for embracing the heart and soul of the crossing. And a little nudge, a little poke, to remind you that the wildlife that we have here in Agora is entrenched and—a vital part of our culture. I mean, when I walk into the park behind my house, the first thing I see is beware of rattlesnakes. Well, they're part of our culture. So I would like you to consider including the Cultural Arts Council when you make your decisions regarding funding or outreach or whatever you do for every social aspect—not just the art part of it, but for every social aspect. Thank you, and I'm sorry that I started with the definition.
Our next speaker is Daniel Farkas.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilpeople, mayors, everybody else. So, one of the things that has recently been talked about was adopting some new guidelines in the commercial overlay district over where we had a little problem last year with the project on Chesbro. And there was some considerations and some issues about application of code, and it was not—really not really clear. And we did discuss with the previous mayor about talking—changing the guidelines area so that there would be more control, so we wouldn't have another Chesbro issue as we had over there. I believe also, not only the architectural part of it, but application of exemptions and code should also be looked at. That particular project, there was some considerations for what we would call a concave lot. I think there was inappropriate application, and I think that there should be a better overview, or there should be better additional people reviewing when applications are asking for exemptions, or when things are no longer black and white. So that's my ask, is that we can look at some type of policy change. I think we talked about it. And thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. We have no further speaker cards.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to a discussion of city council's short- and long-term goals. I will now defer to city manager Nathan Hamburger for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and honorable councilmembers. So today is the exciting first step of our two-year budget year process, and this afternoon we'll be looking at our goals that have been established for us this fiscal year, and then looking forward to the next couple of years. And I will lay out all of the proposed goals that have come from each of the city council members. I have put those into what I believe are the correct subcommittees, and tonight we'll go through that and discuss basically what has been proposed. For the public's knowledge—so this is step one of a multi-layered process. We will go through the proposed goals today. We will then divide those out into the subcommittees. Those will be worked through. Staff will present costs, resources, all the things involved that timelines. And the subcommittee will make recommendations that will come back to the council at our next Goals Workshop, which will be, I believe, May 12. And we'll go through that, so you'll have multiple opportunities to have input and be part of this process. With that, we're going to—I'm going to turn it over in just a second to our director of finance, Diego Apañez, and he's going to give you just an economic overview. I know things are a roller coaster right now, but we're doing the best we can to put projections together. It is early in the year, so we do not have all of our revenue projections just yet, but those will come over the upcoming months. We do have several consultants that we work with, and so as we move along in this budget process, we will continue to get that information and share that with the council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Diego. I'm going to take the next couple of slides, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you, city manager. Good afternoon, mayor and city council. The last couple of weeks, finance staff and the city manager have been meeting with department heads to go over our biannual process. This is a two-year budget cycle for fiscal year '25, '26, and '27. Overall, the macro environment continues to affect local businesses in the city of Agora Hills. High interest rates, food prices, and election results have introduced an additional level of economic uncertainty. Finance staff is aware of the big macro picture and is looking to kind of make clear assumptions into our budget forecasts as we go forward to this process. Nationally, consumer confidence and sentiment—recently sought but future policy decisions—excuse me—could exert pressure on pricing, resulting in fewer sales transactions and adjustments to consumer behavior. Just looking at the overall scope, as the city manager mentioned earlier, consumers are looking at the national scope, recent national trends, and policies that have taken place this week. People are being cautious, and we are aware of that. In terms of the city revenues, we have been working with our revenue consultants and have come up with sales tax. For the fiscal year '25 and '26, the forecast has declined by 11.5%. From the current adopted budget, the reason is that consumers are opting for budget-friendly options in an inflation-driven environment. Property tax, however, is forecasted to increase by 4% for fiscal year '25, '26, due an estimated 3.54 increase in real property tax—next taxable value, and VLF expected to increase by 3.29%. Our transit occupancy tax is in line with adopted revenues, and something that the finance staff is looking to consider in the next budget cycle is our investment income. We are seeking ways to maximize current high interest rates into some of our investment vehicles and looking at how we can maximize that as a possible stronger revenue stream with city council approval and discussion, of course. In terms of our revenues, we—the city does rely heavily on grants, and city has many project costs committed to grants, but the reimbursement process is low, and staff has submitted many, many requests to get sort of that funding back to—into our accounts. We will continue to pursue grant funds via federal and state opportunities. We are looking for that, but once again, the environment is changing on a daily basis, so we will keep everyone, director, city manager, aware of those changes as they come through. We do—we will be adopting the fee study that was adopted by city council in December of last year. We are looking to include that increase in fees into our revenue stream and see how that sort of adds to the outlook of our budget. In terms of expenditures, public safety is usually our big increase or a big cost for the city. We are looking to kind of put that increase into our budget. The forecast is not available yet, but we will be kind of integrating that increase as we go forward. Legal services and animal control are also looking at some possible increases in the next—in the next year. next, in the next year. We expect Morrison Park to be completed during this fiscal year of 2025, '26. And in terms of taking a conservative approach to our budget, we are doing a zero-based approach to budgeting this year, meaning that every department head needs to sort of justify their costs from zero to what they're asking for to continue their operations. The next point, our cow purse payment is usually one of the biggest costs that gets paid in the first of July, the first week of July. We do that to kind of get it out of the way and not be behind. We will look at our reserves, and we also like review our long-term debt. The last point is, we will review sort of our personnel levels and see if we need to make any kind of adjustments to that. That is just a suggestion, that is nothing that's on the immediate forecast. That is the presentation in terms of revenues, and next slide.
Thank you, Diego. So I will start in with the first subcommittee, just for operational process standpoint. I will pause after I get through the proposed goals and just see if there's any questions from the city council, or any comments, any feedback that we need to get, and then we'll, after that, we'll move on. Yes? Oh, yeah, I apologize. Yeah, go, please.
Is it all right if I ask, if, just while we're talking about the forecast, if I have a question about this? I have two questions for you, Mr. Abanez.
Yes, please.
The first one is, a lot of the federal cuts that have been happening over the past few weeks and months have been very hard on a lot of the social services and education services, and, you know, things that this council hasn't really directly felt. But in your budget, do you have thoughts on our exposure to either reimbursements that may be at risk, or federal earmarks that may or may not come in? I mean, is that going to be part of the budget process, the exposure that we as a city may have from further cuts?
It could be a possible discussion, bullet point, but at this point, everything that was appropriated, we do expect to receive. We are aware of certain cuts that have been made, but nothing has directly trickled down to us directly, and everything that's been appropriated has been a congressional act, so we still anticipate receiving those funds.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's one question. And then my other question is, typically, and I know there's, there's, there's no guarantee of this, but just what I remember is that the sheriff's contracts tend to be, they tend to go up and down every other year. Like, it seems to be not that big of an increase one year, and then a larger increase the next year, and then, some of that might have been COVID-related, but I just can't remember what last year was, and if we are expecting the, because that could be huge, or it could be, you know, just a couple percentage points. It could go either way, I've seen both. So do you have any indication of which way it might go?
Not any indication just yet, councilmember, but I believe that last year was about a 3.1% increase. We, I don't want to commit to a certain number on that, but I am sort of keeping that range as sort of my baseline going forward. I think I'll have more information later in the weeks, or later, when city manager and assistant city manager meet with the sheriff's department to get a better forecast.
Okay, thank you.
And I can also just add in, Mr. Dev and I will be meeting with the sheriff's department tomorrow in our annual contract city meeting, and so we should normally get the rate at that point. So we'll be able to share that fairly soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, so let's dive into the Land Use Economic Development Subcommittee. Just to touch on the goals that we are already working on, we will bring back, we submitted bid, or received bids for the light impacts, and we have a recommendation from the subcommittee we'll bring back, and I believe the first being in April. We are working with our oak tree ordinance update, and that'll be done, anticipated by the end of this fiscal year. Move into the next. So the fun part, the proposed goals for the next two-year budget cycle. So we have the Oldagora Commercial Overlay Design Standards, so there'll be the creation of those standards. We have consideration of code updates related to solar and generator backup systems, and specifically, I believe those are tied to screening requirements that currently exist in the city's municipal code. The next is consideration of code updates related to our hillside ordinance. Then the next would be to review the allowance of artificial turf, consider rent stabilization and renter protections, and then also to consider a public-private partnership to create a downtown civic area, or a plan for such, for such a downtown area. And then to review group home legislation and legal rulings in regards to policy. And so with that, I'm gonna pause and see if there's any questions or any feedback from the city council here.
Wondering like, for trail adoption, or for, to increase trails, or to kind of follow up on our trail map, would that go to the land use?
It's actually under a different subcommittee, and it will come up, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor Prostam Wolf, can you elaborate a little bit, City Manager Hamburger, on review allowance of artificial turf and what that means?
So the goal that was received was to look at, now that the, whether we allow artificial turf in residential areas, I think there's, there's been legislation passed to consider not allowing, or not, not the use of it. And then kind of the health benefits of it, the environmental impacts, I think that's from the standpoint, and if you'd like to address further, please.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I don't know how many years ago, there was a ordinance, a law passed saying that you cannot block a homeowner from using artificial turf, and then that changed in, probably in the last two or three years from a Ben Allen bill. So the Ben Allen bill said that cities, municipalities can ban artificial turf, just not, they can't ban, like, natural, natural, more natural products. So for example, if you want to rip your lawn out and put in natives, that's great, but cities now do have the option to ban the plastic artificial turf, because apparently there's some health issues related to that, so some cities have done that.
And do we know, is the state moving towards that?
Well, it's law.
No, no, I know that is, but, but I mean, the state's saying you cannot put.
No, the state is saying cities can decide whether they want to ban it in their areas, so I thought that would be an interesting discussion for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments or questions on that, we will, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I do have a question. I mean, I'm not sure how it came up, and I'd just like to understand a little bit more, considering the rent stabilization and renter protection, I'm not sure, kind of, how that affects Agoura, and kind of why we're thinking about that. So I thought I'd ask about that.
If you'd like to, just go into your reason behind it.
Yeah, I just, I put it on there because I've gotten quite a few messages from the renters in our apartments, like, the one by Trader Joe's Oak, what is it, Oak? I'm blanking on the name of the apartment complex, but it's Avalon, but it's Oak something Avalon. So I have gotten several messages from people who've had to move because they can't afford the rent, so they wanted to know if the city had any discretion on that. I don't know if we do. I know there have been some laws and propositions that have come through that haven't passed, so I don't know what our capability is to, to look at that, to look at some kind of protection, or, you know, caps on increases, so it's just a question, just a question to look at.
One, one other question, I was hoping City Manager Hamburger could elaborate on the partnership to create a downtown civic area, and what that means and what that looks like.
I think the vision is really to create an area where the public can congregate, you know, in an open space area, whether it's, you know, related to some commercial around that, possibly some housing, similar to the village, but, but looking for, I think, just an area there's potential, the office market is something that our staff has, we've previously looked at from an economic development standpoint. And rather, I think the proposal is, you know, a lot of places, we'll just turn these things into one use or another. And so it's really just to take a look at what are the opportunities that we can have where the public can gather in certain spaces, and, and kind of look for that, that heart of the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. So we will move on to the environmental sustainability. This year, we are, we are doing the implementation of the Styrofoam and Plastic Utensils Ordinance, so it's the education period. We, the council adopted the ordinance, and so you will see materials, letters are going out to businesses now, and then we'll have materials that are produced for them to help educate them, number one, and where to find products, and the best products to use. We are continuing to work on our climate action and adaptation plan and implementation, and I know our building official and community development staff have been working very hard on that with our consultant, so we'll continue to do that. And then looking at the proposed goals for the next budget cycle, the replacement of non-native trees, and the idea to create a plan to revegetate our parks utilizing native plants, and then identify other locations that we can plant trees. So this is kind of a combination, I think, of multiple council members' goals, but I felt that those aligned closely enough. I think they were really all tied to having native trees and native planting. And then also to consider the Liberty Canyon Creek Restoration, and that was from, if you recall, the larger study that we did citywide of all the possibilities for creek restoration. And again, I will pause to take any comments or questions from the council.
So I will take the opportunity to take the mic here on a few, few different things. The first one is non-native tree and native tree planting. Native tree planting serves so many purposes, for increasing biodiversity, improving our watershed, improving biodiversity, along with fire protection, which I know that everybody is very, very concerned about. So that is something I'm very passionate about, is to figure out how we can get as many native planting projects in the city and our sphere of influence as possible in the coming years. I know a lot of our properties are owned by MRCA, state parks, National Park Service, but I want to figure out a way how we can work with them to get native plantings, because I view it as a way, our region has been so environmentally degraded for the last 200 years from sheep and cattle grazing, and so it's a shell of what it once was. So if we can return it to how it once looked, it can, it can serve as a fire buffer and serve so many purposes that I once mentioned. The other thing is the Liberty Canyon Creek Restoration. I do want to look into that. Creek naturalization is a very expensive, very complicated process, and we've looked at other places in the city, but in Liberty Canyon, I think that there is an opportunity where we can naturalize the creek with a, Liberty Canyon was supposed to be a highway that was going to connect to Mulholland, and it was gonna be like a, an off-ramp, and they were gonna build a freeway through there, but they didn't. So it's, it's very wide right now, and I see that there is an opportunity for the city to figure out how to get funding, because it'd be very expensive, but to, to naturalize part of the creek, and it can be part of the wildlife corridor. So these are two items that I'm really, really passionate about. And I think that there is a way to, to get this done in an environmentally sensitive way, in a cost-effective way, in a way that will help, that will be beneficial to the residents and to our ecosystem.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Moving.
All right, we will move to Public Works. We have quite a bit going on here, so I will go over what we've completed so far. We've updated the RACE-DOBE interchange lighting. We've completed the potential creek naturalization study, which just previously was mentioned. We are working on the Chesbrough Road Trailway, and so pre-design work, if you recall, that was the survey work, which I know we are nearing completion on that, and have that information almost done, which then allows us to look at what areas we could build trailways on. And then the planting of native trees and removal of non-native species, so we'll continue that throughout the year. And we have our bikeway improvements. We do have funding that we have secured for that. We do just need to schedule that around the local school schedule, so we'll be doing that this summer. So now we'll move to the proposed goals for the next two budget cycle. We have explore further locations for stormwater diversion, and if you recall, right now, we have the project out to bid, April 1st, we should receive bids for that project, but this is to look at further locations beyond that. Develop an action plan and funding options for the Lake Lindero and surrounding amenities, potentially looking at, how do we address the issues on the lake with the water clarity, the environmental impacts, and potentially, are there things that if the city was to work with a local group or take ownership of that, are there other benefits that our local community could get from either the use of courts or swimming pool, golf course, whatever that may be? We'll look at all of those options. The next would be to complete design and seek funding for trails and bikeway improvements in Oldagora. We have already started conversations with our federal partners to look at various funding sources. As you recall, if we're, in order to get federal funds, we need to tie our trails to something federal, so we are working on that connection. But this would be to expand that and actually put plans together. The next is to identify options for median landscaping, and this is the area on Canaan Road from Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the city boundary, which is towards Oak Park. And this goal is really specifically to enhance what is there. The next is additional vehicle charging stations for electric vehicles. And then I'm gonna go the next slide, because we have quite a list here. I like, I like the ambition, I like it. The next is the system and action plan with, regarding our hillside slope on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The next item that is proposed is remove graffiti and help rebuild a private HOA sign on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Canaan. The next is to prepare our waste hauling franchise agreement, look at all of our options and potential timelines for action. And the final one is to explore possibilities of a monument entry signs for Agoura Road on both ends of the area shared with Westlake Village, and on Calabasas on the other end, and then explore Thousand Oaks Boulevard as well. So with that, I will pause and ask if there's any questions or comments in the Public Works.
I will just pipe in and say that I am so glad to be on the Public Works Committee, Penny, and I don't mean that sarcastically, like, these things are all very, very exciting to me. So Penny, thank you for appointing me to that. I'm excited to be able to work on the trails as part of the Public Works Subcommittee. And then just wanted to lift up the funding options for Lake Lindero and surrounding amenities. With the passage of Proposition 4, there may be funding available to us. And one of the things that I was, one of the last places that I did a whole lot of door knocking when I was running for office was in Lake Lindero, and a number of the residents around that lake were lamenting how poor the water quality was, and how much they wished that it wasn't that way. And so I marry that, that desire with the possibility that perhaps we could get funding from the state to help us clean that up. It's water that goes into our watershed, it's polluting our watershed, and given the environmental harp that we have here in Agoura Hills, I'm hopeful in just exploring that.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment on the EV one, about looking at options for further EV stations. I guess one thing that I would maybe add into it, or maybe change a little bit, would be maybe upgrading our current EV facilities instead of just adding new ones. So the current facilities that we have for EV are the slow chargers, they take, they take like eight, eight to 12 hours to fully charge a vehicle, so it's, it's not, a lot of people have access to those. There's numerous ones of those in our, in our location, but there's not a lot of the fast chargers in our area. So I would look at the possibility, if we could find grants or anything like that, that we could upgrade our current EV facilities. That would be some additionally that I would like to add to that.
Please note our Public Works Committee.
You got it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start from the first one. So the stormwater diversion is something that I find is very low-hanging fruit. So we need to meet our, our permitting process through LA County and the state, and it can get really expensive to create individual stormwater capture and then treatment facilities. They can be up to a million dollars each for individual sites. So looking at that to then, to funnel it to our pure water plant can actually help to create drinking water supply for about, I think it was like 3,500, 3,500 residents in the city of Agoura Hills from rainfall. So that's something I'm really, really interested in. I do want to look at the design for funding for the bikeway improvements in Oldagora. I think that's really, really important. And then moving to the next page, have we moved to the next page, or are we just, yeah, And then the monument sign is something else I'm interested in. We're, in our Public Works Committee, we looked at that on Canaan, and so I think it would be nice to be in, make a way, make, find a way to be similar to the, the signs that would be nice to be in, make a way, make, find a way to be similar to the signs that will be going in the future in other parts of the city, and I think that's something that we should look at.
Thank you. And then I would just like to make a note about the hillside slope on TO where the townhouses are. I noticed today when I drove by, it's now covered with black plastic. It looks, something seriously needs to be, I know it's not our land, but we need to work on that, because it looks like it's going to be quite dangerous if it's not addressed. And I noticed they've now got some more tarp behind some of that, closer into the homes as well. So obviously, there's a lot of slippage going on. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I just want to add that, so I have a list all year long of things that I add to my goals list, so by the time this comes, especially for a two-year budget process, I'm like, "Yeah, man," and poor Nate gets a very long email. So I'm of the opinion that you send it all, like, I'm sending it all, right? And I want, unless there's something super egregious on here that someone doesn't agree with, I say it all goes to Subcommittee to be discussed for price, priority, this and that. So I love hearing about it, but like, if you see that I'm not advocating for my bullet points, it's because I'm waiting until next time, right? Like, when we're in Subcommittee, if Subcommittee says, "I think we should cut this and add that," and one of mine is cut, then I'm going to bring it back and say, "Well, here's why I think we should look at it." So I don't want you to think my silence is that I don't care about these things. I actually care about them all. I care about your goals, I care about my goals, and I think once things are hashed in Subcommittee, that's when you're going to hear a little more from me, so just wanted to explain that.
I think we all feel that way. Thank you.
Okay. So why don't we move on to the next? So we have our Los Verges Malibu Council of Governments. The goal here is to create a legislative platform and to kind of lead that charge. The, I think the reasoning behind this is really that when the COG, which is made up of five different cities, takes a look at any type of legislative action, certain cities are not able to either vote without going back to the entire council or not able to take action. So it limits our effectiveness as a group, and sometimes things are brought up very quickly, and so... And then just to look at a legislative platform, maybe even mirroring something that we have, as a city, have done, and then provide the Executive Director some kind of ability to react to these type of things with that legislative platform. All right, and I will pause there.
Yeah, I will comment on that, because I'm the COG representative, and there are several times where I've had to abstain on a vote, not because I didn't agree with it, but because we hadn't discussed it previously. And I would never commit us to something that we hadn't all agreed upon, so I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll agree with the mayor there as serving as the COG alternate. You know, we have the five cities, and together we have a lot of power, but it's complex with different councils, having different opinions and different views, so I think this is a really important step, and I will support this. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move to Community Services next. So we are in the process of completing the Chumash Park restroom. I know it is, I'm bugging Amy every day, but I know it's getting there. We are so close. We are almost done with that, and we will have our ribbon cutting coming up very soon. The Morrison Park play equipment, so we have, we've submitted an additional grant application. The play equipment has been ordered. Where we are now is we are working on the design, which will come to you, the award for that agreement is coming to the council for the play surface, specifically in the sidewalks, so we'll be working on that next. And there is still a funding gap, so we'll, as we flip to the next slide, that'll be one of the things that we talk about. I'll just jump to that bullet point, which is the second one, and the goal is, proposal to work and find that funding gap so that we can finalize that project and get all the installation done. The next proposed goal is the community strengthening through a change in community events. And I think, I don't want to speak for this council member, but I'll just, my understanding of it is that the goal here is to really take, relook at the programs that we have, our movies in the parks, concerts in the parks, and do things that not only bring people from outside the area to enjoy, which is great, as a region, we all do it, but also just to look at a community of focus, point at some of those events. And then the final one is to identify and assist securing some form of public art for the Wildlife Crossing, and I think you heard a little bit of that from our public speaker earlier today. It doesn't mean that we're going to be, the goal was really to work collaboratively with all of the groups involved, not just to act on our own, but to find a way that we can celebrate that, the Wildlife Crossing being in our community. So with that, I am going to go ahead and open it up to any comments and questions you may have.
Any comments?
I do, actually. I'll explain the first and the last one. So on the first one, one of the things that I heard when I was knocking on doors is they love our community events, and this is fantastic, and a desire for perhaps things a little bit more intimate. And I was really taught a lesson when, again, I was running and Elise and I were walking around the movies in the park, this was the concert in the park, and, you know, "Hi, I'm Elise Buckley Weber, I'm the mayor, thank you so much for being here. Where do you live?" "Newberry Park. Where do you live?" And so, you know, so we're providing a tremendous service to the entire region, and I support us doing that, I think we should do that, and many, many of our residents also are there and love that. And I would love to see if there's an opportunity for us to, and we're already doing some of it, like that film festival, oh my gosh, it just epitomized, you know, we did have some folks from out, but it really was, it was more intimate. And so just curious to see if we can explore and find opportunities to really build stronger community here in Agora Hills. And then, it's funny, it was actually also at that event where I was talking to, and all of you know her, Beth Pratt, about the Wildlife Bridge, and she's like, "Oh, my gosh, Kate, we're going to unveil this sculpture up in Griffith Park, and then we're about to commission a sculpture here." I was like, "Oh, well, did you know we have this cultural arts commission?" She's like, "Really?" So it wasn't, they aren't intentionally leaving us out, they just move so quickly, and they do so much. And so I just think, both with that opportunity and with future opportunities, really making sure that we're integrating our cultural arts, thinking and aesthetic into that Wildlife Bridge and vice versa.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I would just like to say for the public who's watching, that the Morrison Park playground is going to be an all-accessible playground, and we don't have one of those yet in our city, so I'm very excited that that's coming forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm going to move to the next, is our Law Enforcement, Fire, and Emergency Response Subcommittee. So we have expanded the use of technology for our public safety monitoring, and I know many of you have visited our Lost Hills station and seen all of the new technology and equipment and monitoring that's going on there. We've also looked at our training alternative for CERT, which is because LA County Fire is only able to offer some of the classes in areas that now are no longer probably convenient for our residents, so we have staff and a volunteer going through the training program, and we've got the equipment and supplies for that. And then we are working on our home hardening education campaign, along with our Agora Hills Fire Safe Council, and we have a bunch of information that we're going to be putting out very soon here, and then we have our grant program that will be closing out fairly soon as well. Now on to the proposed goals. The first is consider establishing a memorandum of understanding with Southern California Edison for a support center after any PSPS events, power shut-off events. The next is to look at a secure backup internet services for hard-to-reach areas in the community. And I believe really this goal arose from the recent fires and the loss of power at the same time, and that there were residents that didn't have cell service, because the cell tower battery backups only lasted a certain amount of time, and so we're looking, this would be to look at an alternative and how we assist those residents to make sure that they're getting information, even if the power's out. The next is to look at installing speed cameras at Race Doby, Lake Lindero Drive area. The next is our wildfire prevention, expanding our home hardening program through grants, working with our Agora Hills Fire Safe Council, and making improvements easy. And the, this is kind of from multiple council members, so I've combined all of that into one, as I think it really ties into one kind of program. And the make improvements easy really is to find a way to make it affordable, something that we can help expedite from a permit standpoint, and educate those kind of DIY people that want to do it at home and how they can do that efficiently. The next is to enhance our emergency evacuation education program, allowing people to know what zone they're in, where to get information. We've already started some of that, actually, but really, the goal here is to really expand that education. The next is for electric bike enforcement and consideration of how we regulate those. The next is to explore an option for liaison deputy with the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. And the next is promote our CERT and Citizens on Patrol and to expand that program. And so with that, I will pause and take any feedback, questions that the council may have.
Anyone?
Okay. I will start. I'll start with the bottom two. So with the liaison with Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, it's really important that we have a strong and impactful relationship with Lost Hills. It's, there's a shortage of deputies, and I understand that, and I would like to explore a way to expand our relationship with Lost Hills and how to get service with, in Agora Hills. An example would be during the wildfire, when a lot of the deputies were pulled to the Malibu area, and we had PSPS events, and figuring out a way to get law enforcement to, you know, ensure that they're in the Agora community. And I think a liaison would help with that. The other thing I do want to touch on is some of the home hardening programs and working with Agora Hills Fire Safe Council. I think, I don't think, I know that wildfire is the most urgent natural disaster we're dealing with here in LA County. I mention this all the time, but LA County is the most disaster-prone county in the entire nation, but wildfire rises the top of that. So how can we work with an organic community group to get information out to residents about how they can better prepare their home for wildfire, how they can better prepare the community for wildfire? And I think that the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council is doing a really good job of getting us in the best position to be prepared for the next fire, because it's not if, it's when, and we all know that. And so I'd like to explore opportunities to better work with the Fire Safe Council to give them the resources to educate our community on how to prepare. Thank you.
I don't think anyone would disagree with you. Anyone else? No? All right?
All right. As we move to the end of our subcommittees, and just want to highlight the next steps. So as I mentioned previously, these will go back to each of the respective subcommittees for review and recommendations. We will discuss these and finalize the goals at a goal-setting workshop, and I apologize, I said May 12th previously, it's May 14th. So May 14th, we will meet again and do that. And we will finalize all the budget items, community outreach grants, which is open right now for the public, for those that are interested. Our staff can assist with that, and applications are on our website. And then we will have a budget workshop on June 11th, so a lot's going to happen between now and then. Our finance Subcommittee will be reviewing the budget as it goes through that process before it comes back to you. And then we will look for the city council to consider adoption of the budget at a meeting on June 25th. So with that, I will close out my presentation, just open it up for any final questions you may have of me or staff, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any final questions? I just think we want to say we want it all. So now we need to get to work and figure out how to finance everything.
And if I can just add, I really encourage, and I know there's some veterans in the room, but for anyone else watching, everyone is welcome to come to the Subcommittee meetings. These are public meetings where we really do get into the nitty-gritty. This is all high-level, big picture, we want the moon, we want it all, and I think it's great that we have all of this in front of us, but the tough part comes in the Subcommittee, Subcommittee level, when we talk about how much things cost and where that money would come from and what we have to prioritize. So I can't overstate how important it is for the public to come, not just to city council meetings, but to those Subcommittee meetings, and like I said, I know you're in the room here, you all know how important that is, but if the public is watching, I encourage you to come. It makes a big difference to hear from you directly in those conversations.
Yes, and if they can't attend, you can always send in emails to the committee members.
I would like to echo the comments by Councilmember Klein Lopez and Mayor Sylvester, and thank the Old Agora community that I see that came out in force, and thank the Fire Safe Council that has come out in force, and come to the committee meetings, please, because tonight we're just throwing spaghetti on the wall, I think is the term, but it's in the committee meetings where we will be making these decisions, so please continue to be engaged, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'll go back to my script. Is there a formal action requested? I don't believe so. Are there any comments from staff? Seeing none, any other comments from city council? Seeing none. This concludes our goal-setting workshop. The regular city council meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.